So we shall open this November seventeenth. School committee meeting. We were just in, um, open session.
Uh, executive session.
Executive session, excuse me. Thank you for that correction. We were just in executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual regarding November tenth to opening the lock sessions scheduled by Christmas Eve at half past. At this time, we will, um, take public input. Citizens at this time may address the committee on items of school business not on the agenda. The committee will take such items under advisement without action at the meeting during which this item is presented. Matters pertaining to the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health of individuals will not be permitted. Members of the public will also be welcome to comment during the public input through Zoom. Please raise your Zoom hand. Uh, we ask that you keep your camera on when making a Zoom comment, and that you will follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes, and only on topics under the purview of the school committee. So at this time, do we have any public input? And Tim Knight is monitoring.
I'm not. I was supposed to.
I am.
Leo. Oh, you are. Excuse me. All right. Thanks, Leo. All right. Very good. Um, new business. Medfield Public Schools, um, strategic plan.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Scott Borstel is here from the Teaching Learning Alliance. I know that he put a packet in front of you, and he has a quick presentation to go over regarding the process and the timeline for our strategic plan. I'm just going to.
Good evening. Uh, my name is, uh, Dr. Scott Borstel. I'm the Director of Innovations in School Leadership. If you want to split the screen. Sorry. In your folder, I've put a copy, a printed copy of the presentation for you, if you want to take notes along with it. Uh, I've also given you on the left-hand side, uh, superintendent's checklist, which is a, a document that we use to map out the entire strategic planning process, all the dates, all the steps and responsibilities that need to happen. And then in the right-hand side, underneath the presentation in the folder, there's, uh, uh, several-page overview of what the three-phase process looks like, so that if you want to visit it another time. So again, my name is Scott Borstel. I'm the Director of Innovations in School Leadership for the Teaching and Learning Alliance. Um, we call ourselves TLA. And, uh, TLA has an office in Woburn. Our main office is in Woburn. We also have an office in Marshfield. And, um, I'm, I represent the leadership division, and one of the services that we offer is strategic planning, and we are very pleased to be partnering with the Medfield Public Schools to engage in this work. We've done this work in Hingham, Cohasset, Holliston, Woonsocket, Rhode Island, Putnam, Connecticut, Neshoba Regional, West Boylston. We are currently engaged in the work in Hamilton, Wenham, Situate, Marshfield, Monomoy, Cape Cod Tech, the second time around in Woonsocket. We did their plan three years, four years ago, and we're, we're doing their successor plan. Um, and then in the Marshfield Public Schools as well. TLA, um, is a nonprofit organization that's been around for about thirty years. And, um, on the leadership side, we have seventeen consultants that engage in learning walkwork, strategic planning work, uh, and we do coaching work across the country, specifically leadership coaching work. There will be a team of four of us partnering with you in, in Medfield. Um, I will serve as the lead. And then joining me will be, um, Dr. Gary Maestis. And Gary is, uh, recently retired as the Hingham Superintendent of Schools. He actually was in Plymouth, Massachusetts as the superintendent for thirteen years, retired, and then took a one-year interim as a superintendent in, in Hingham. And then Dr. Pam Gould, who just this last June retired as the Superintendent of Schools for the Sandwich Public Schools. And then also joining us will be Zephian Eddy, who is a retired superintendent from Mansfield. So the four of us will be engaged in different phases of the work, and you will see us at different times. But you will see me as the lead throughout, uh, throughout the process.
Okay.
During is one of ours. Please get it up.
Pardon? He was just waiting it for to be on the screen.
No, no. It's, it's been trying for a little while, I think.
All right. I can continue on if you'd like me to.
Do we have it? Yeah, sure. There we are.
There it is. It's back. Next slide, please. So the strategic, strategic planning process that we will employ and facilitate with you here in Medfield is actually a three-phase process. In that first phase, it's really building the foundation, and I'll give you specifics in a moment and what that means. The second phase is where we actually, uh, work with you to co-construct the strategic plan. And the third phase is, okay, you have a plan, so now what does it look like in implementation? How do you horizontally and vertically align your goals, your strategic objectives, and your strategic initiatives across and up and down the organization? Next slide, please. In phase one, um, in, in phase one, we will work, oh.
There.
There you go. Uh, phase one is an important part in preparing to develop the plan. In phase one, the consultants or our team and the district leaders will identify the process that you want to employ, the timeline for doing it, and then any specific needs that you have. I've spent some time looking at your current plan. That were, and it's interesting, Tim Bonfati, who was sitting on, on your board. I know Tim. I am the retired superintendent from the Marshfield Public Schools, and Tim was the project manager when we built our new high school. So I spent three and a half years working with, with Tim on, on building the new high school. But in that first phase, we will work with, um, the leadership team in Medford to begin to collect any ex post facto data that you use to determine your strengths and your challenges in the Medfield Public Schools. And you'll begin to collect that data very soon, even though we're not going to start the process with you until April. You'll begin collecting that data as a, as a district, um, very soon. In that first phase, we will also administer a survey that is designed by Dr. Gary Maestis, and he will work again with you and the strategic team to design that survey, to collect the data, the quantitative data that you are looking for. There's also an open-ended piece at the each of, at the end of each question, so that the public has the opportunity to comment. And then we also run a series of up to five. Sometimes we do more than five if the district identifies more than five constituent groups. And we come in and run ninety to a hundred and twenty-minute, um, little under two-hour, uh, forums with your key stakeholders across, uh, across your community, your community members, municipal, your leadership team, your staff, school committee, anyone that you are seeking to get qualitative input from. We will, uh, run a focus group with that group of people. And that is the three pieces of data that we collect that are used to drive the process, as you go to the next slide, please, in phase two. So in that first phase, it's very community-rich, in, because we're trying to get as much information as we can about the Medfield Public Schools. Because in phase two, a strategic planning committee comes together that represents, again, the constituents in your community. We will work with you to put that team together. It's roughly twenty. We've done it with as many as twenty-six, and we've done it with as few as twelve. It really depends on what you, as, as a school district, decide who you want represented on that, that strategic planning committee. The strategic, strategic planning committee comes together and analyzes all of the data, both, both quantitative and qualitative, that was collected in phase one in order to begin to inform the work of developing the plan in phase two. We will revisit your current mission. In looking at your current plan, I didn't see a vision statement. I didn't see core values. But we will, we will revisit your mission, and then we will look at vision. We will look at core values. We will look at theory of action and develop all of those pieces of the plan. We will also, um, as a result of the data analysis process that occurs, we will engage in a series of protocols with you folks in the strategic planning committee to develop goals or strategic objectives, strategic initiatives, outcomes as a result of those actions, person responsible, and a timeline for completion. And then a mechanism to regularly report that out, both through the school committee and to the public. Those pieces are all created in that. And then we'll end with the creation of a theory of action that, that occurs as part of that second phase. That is five meetings, roughly, that occurs. We've, um, done it in as few as four, and we've done it in as many as six. If we go over the five, we do not charge the district for the extra meeting. We stay with it until it needs to be done. The pace of the work is dictated by the people that are in the work. Our role is to be facilitators, and so at the end of this process, the plan represents your fingerprints, not ours at TLA. And so we, through a series of protocols, set it up so that the strategic planning committee is doing the heavy cognitive lifting, and we're facilitating the process for them as, as they go through that. The third and final phase, uh, is, uh, the plan is developed at that point, and it's time to talk about, well, how does the district make it a living document on a daily basis? How do you align your goals from the school committee all the way down to classroom practitioners? School committee, district leaders, building leaders and staff aligned with school improvement plans, aligned with administrator and teacher evaluation goals as part of that, as, as part of that process. The timeline, next slide, please. The timeline for this work, we're going to begin this work with you folks in April. We're actually going to begin some of phase one sooner than April. We think, um, sometime right after the February break. We will, um, come out and, and do the focus groups as well as administer the survey so that we're ready in April to begin phase two, which is the strategic planning committee work and the, the development of the plan. The target is to present it to you as a body for approval in one of your June school committee meetings. The way that we work it, we actually have a professional graphics design organization that we work with. So what will be presented to the school committee will be a Word doc with the important text that's been developed as part of the strategic planning process. And once the school committee approves the mission, core values, vision, theory of action, as well as your strategic objectives and your strategic initiatives, we then send that out to be professionally designed. And the digital application that we use for that is called ISSUU, and you present it on your website using ISSUU. And it, um, comes out very beautifully. We also provide you a one-page dashboard which contains the, the meat of your plan, so that if you want to use it for any kind of branding or any kind of community information, instead of sending out a, a large plan, which is available on your website, there's a one-page dashboard that contains your mission, your core values, your vision, your theory of action, and then your, your key, your, uh, strategic objectives. And that's the process.
Any comments?
Could you, could you click on, Owen, the, uh, strategic, strategic plan sample? That's there. I think it's a live link, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
So this is the Holliston Public Schools that we did, um, last year, and this is in ISSUU. So you can see it presents us a book, and we, part of the process, the team will be giving us photos. And then we will use those photos and embed those photos in the strategic plan itself.
Put on this. I want to get it all the way down. And then if you hit this.
Right there. Yeah. It flips it for you. And you'll see that it's, um, our format actually is aligned nicely with your current plan. Uh, in the way your current plan presents, it's very similar in its content. And, and, and as I said, I did not see, it may exist, but I did not see a vision or, um, core values in your current plan, and those will be included in the plan that we collaborate with you on. So you can see their mission statement and their core values and their vision, their theory of action. Some explanation of their theory of action. And then, um, they, most times, we work with the district to identify a theme. In Holliston, they have this gorgeous eight-arch bridge, and, um, it's a new leadership team in Holliston. And so their theme was building bridges together, and they used the bridge. And then their strategic objectives, they actually called arches. And so if you decide, we just worked with Putnam, Connecticut, and they chose not to use a theme, but to call them strategic objectives and strategic initiatives, it just really depends on what your preference is as a team when you're, when you're doing the work. And then you'll see they're laid out by initiatives. The format, um, it does not have to be exactly like this. If, when we get into the work, you as a group decide you want the format to look differently, we certainly can tailor that, um, to do that. We're working with Canton and starting strategic planning in Canton after the holidays, and they want to actually create a monitoring system that's a, a red light, a yellow light, and a green light that shows where they are, uh, in making progress toward meeting their initiatives in order to meet their objectives. So it just depends on what your needs are. We will determine that when we sit down in an introductory meeting with, with your group.
Three months seems aggressive.
We've actually, in Cohasset, it was even more aggressive. We did it in May and June in Cohasset. There's some value. It typically takes, uh, anywhere, um, from two months to four months, depending on the, the pacing of the meetings. There is some value in running them close to each other, because the group is committed, the memory is fresh, and it's more fluid in one step going to the next, because each meeting, the way we design our, our meetings is not a lot of us talking. It's a lot of you as a team talking. We, we set up some information that's given in the beginning. So, for example, when we're working a mission, we go through a protocol with you where you look at your own mission. Then we break you into, into groups, and using a protocol, using an activity sheet that we have, you begin to design, you look at your mission and say, what's there that we want to keep? What's there that's missing? What's there that doesn't belong? And eat, that might happen in three groups, depending on the size of your strategic planning committee. And then we take that information back between that meeting and the next one, and we synthesize across the three groups. We bring it back and using a consensus protocol that we've developed, we reach consensus, approve the mission, and then move on to core values. A very similar process for core values. We come back to the next meeting, synthesized in between. Your group vets that, what we've synthesized, consensus, approve it, and then we move on. So each, it's modular in nature, and each one builds on the next. And by the fifth meeting, it makes sense. It's all come together as a plan.
So I, I, I'm going to just share three or four questions that answer my other way. And, and some of you folks on the committee will know, what I'm just saying, how does this compare to prior process? I'm, I'm more better understanding the makeup of the strategic planning committee, like what does it range for? It's not crystal clear to me, like, what is the role of the community in the plan? I think I hear more, that's around phase one versus, if one is external, two is internal, is I think what I'm hearing.
Correct.
Um, which then I kind of stayed thinking, well, percentage of time allocated at phase one versus two as an idea. And then the last thing, the traffic light thing, I don't know what that is, but that sounds really cool.
Phase two.
The KPI. The traffic light is.
So, right. That's what the, that's the red, yellow, and green. The, in phase one, it's, um, it's really a collection of data from all of your constituents. External being outside of the organization and internal being inside the organization. In phase two.
So how do you gather it, though?
Pardon?
I'm just more, like, how do we gather it in phase one?
So in phase one, what happens is we design a, a survey, and then you, as a district, put the survey out in, in any, in any, we, we do it in Survey Monkey. We've done it in the past in, in, in Google as well, but we found it to be much more effective with Survey Monkey. It's easier for the group to analyze in phase two, the strategic planning committee. And so that usually typically sits out, is put out for seven to ten days with multiple reminders, a link on your website, whatever, whatever. If you use smores as a newsletter, you want to put that out in your newsletters, you want to put it out in your school newsletters. You want to advertise it as much as you can, so you get the best response you can. The plan that we showed you, Holliston, they had fourteen hundred responses. They're a very small community, but they had fourteen hundred responses. They actually put it out to their nine through twelve students during school time and gave them the opportunity. They had about six hundred students respond as part of the process. So you want to put that survey out to everyone you possibly can within your community to, in order to give them the opportunity to provide feedback. The forums are open in a room like this, and they're facilitated by us with a series of open-ended questions around the strengths, the challenges, and the opportunities that the district sees, and we're recording all of that as the conversation is taking place, and it becomes part of the data that's used in phase two. In phase two, it's, it's more internal, but there's an external piece, because your strategic planning committee is comprised of representatives from the school committee, representatives from leadership, representatives from your staff, potentially representatives from your teachers' union, if you choose to do that, community representation, parent representation, and student representation. So that strategic, strategic planning committee represents a microcosm of your community.
I'm actually really excited for this work. Um, I, I helped on, um, the previous strategic plan, and I found that particularly the focus groups was just rich in discussion, you know? We just, we really, I, I, I thought, you know, going out into the community, the senior center, you know, different, you know, stakeholders. And, um, it was just really rich. It was a rich experience, and it's, it's one of, you know, besides graduation, one of my favorite things in my experiences here on the school committee is doing that strategic planning and hearing from the community and engaging with the community.
And the way that we do that, we, we do the focus groups first. We complete at least four of the five focus groups, and then we put the survey out after that. So if people didn't have the opportunity to attend one of the five focus groups, they have their voice in the survey after that. And, uh, it is one of our favorite parts, because the conversation is very rich. We learn the most about a district through the focus group conversations, and we capture as much of that as we can in their voice and not in ours. So you'll hear our facilitator stop and say, "Dr. Marsden, I think I heard you say, is it accurate?" da, 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 before we put it up, put it to print. Sometimes we do it electronically. Sometimes we bring in poster paper, and we do it handwritten. It just depends, um, on the, on what the community wants. But we, we love the, the forums as well.
Fantastic. So I'm looking forward to that.
Madam Chair, may I ask?
You're welcome.
Okay. So, uh, first, are you, uh, how has your practice, um, changed over time in terms of how you, uh, work with electronic capture and video and online forums? Because I find that in most communities at this point, people are, it's very difficult to get a really robust group of people. I know that there are many more people interested about what we're talking about tonight in general than sit in this room tonight. Um, so are you, uh, do you have a mechanism for both in-person and online forums?
We do.
And is that something that you're working on? And, Dr. Marsden, can you remind me how many focus groups we, we did? I wasn't quite on the committee at that point.
Six, I think. Six or seven.
Six. And it was.
Eight or something.
Or was it?
Yeah. I mean, I know that we, we added some, as, as there were some community groups that felt, you know, like they needed to be a part of it, and that was great. So I appreciate the flexibility around that. But, um, was it, I mean, I think some were, like, not attended at all, and some were, so I, I would like to be able to see. And some were really robustly attended. But, um, okay. So I just wanted to see that. I mean, it was, uh.
If I may, in, in response to your first question, we have actually done this process because of the pandemic. In Woonsocket, Rhode Island, we did the entire thing on, uh, online, all remotely.
I mean, and obviously, I, I love to see people more face-to-face, but I also have to respect the fact that our families, who are many people who need to be able to participate the most within this, are also at home with kids, and it's tough to find time, so.
And then when we did Cohasset, it was a, a hybrid approach. And what we have adopted since then, um, for Putnam, Connecticut, that we, uh, are finishing on November thirtieth, last night was our fourth meeting, we did, um, some Zoom forums and some face-to-face. I would be lying to you if I said that it's easy to manage a live forum at the same time that you're dealing with a population of folks that are on Zoom. So we may say to you, uh, that we, if you, if you wanted, let's, let's say your parent community, you want to one, run one Zoom and one face-to-face, we would be open to doing that with you. It, it becomes much more challenging to authentically engage in conversation when you have folks in a room, because what happens is becomes, the way we facilitate it becomes really fluid. It's a conversation. It's, 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 it, it flows so nicely through the essential questions that we ask that it would be really hard to try and engage the Zoom group within that conversation. It will be less organic, less authentic with the folks that are, that are on Zoom. But we will do it either way, whichever you see. Um, we, we are a nonprofit organization. We, believe it or not, I often say we're about making change, not money. Uh, and my executive director hates it when I say that, and I just said it on YouTube. But, so if you determined that you wanted to do more than five focus groups, uh, within a limit, we would do that within the price of the proposal that, that you've approved already. We're looking, our process is really important in good data. Good data in, good output. And so we want to make sure the data is as rich as possible, because we use that data to inform the work around strategic objectives and strategic initiatives in phase two. And if the data is not as strong as it should be, it makes it much more challenging for the group to pull out rich objectives and initiatives as part of the process. So we want to help you in any way we can to ensure you get as much data as possible, both qualitative and quantitative.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions?
My comments are just, I, the, the answers were great. Like, I, I wasn't as clear that the, the day is one, to me, I agree, is like critical. So the answers are great. The phase two and three looked fantastic. I saw that right away. But I like how you finished. The only other, I think I was going to ask, and it's more directed to you, Dr. Marsden, is like the Pandora survey, any of that stuff factor into this?
Yeah. So we did have that conversation. So, um, we started the panorama survey with students last week. So our students, grades four through twelve, have already taken that. Teachers will be next, and then it looks like parents will be the first week in December. So then we're going to use that as additional data as part of this process, too.
Okay.
Had your panorama been a little later, we, we might have said to you, is, maybe we can combine the two. But I will be honest with you, we've struggled with panorama. We have tried to work with them. The way that, um, and I'm not the sophisticated designer of the survey, Dr. Miesis is, but the way um, Dr. Miesis describes it to me, when you answer a certain question, it takes you down a certain path. So you answer that you are a parent and it takes you to the questions that are parent questions. They're not necessarily different. There's one for students, there's one, you know, so there are, you, you identify what you are and then it takes you through the survey. Panorama has not been able to actually work with us to do that. We tried in Hamilton Wenham, we're currently doing Hamilton Wenham's plan and they, they, they use panorama for all of their surveying and they were worried about introducing a second platform, a second, second application. But we were not able to get um, the panorama functions to do what needed to be done for the survey.
They're all separate.
Pardon?
Panorama is all separate, so they, they wouldn't have a function where they would go to one or the other.
Branching off like a tree.
Right. It's just different.
Well, and sometimes that also allows you to have a, a deeper kind of picture of, of the, the data, right? So however you're asking from your perspective, then.
You come out with some key themes.
What will happen?
Dr. Marsden, may I ask you the timeline? I know we spoke, but the timeline for the panorama data to be analyzed, it would be ready for, for.
For January.
Okay. Because what will happen is panorama will become part of your ex post facto data that you'll drop down into a folder. We, we do it all in Google and we create a series of folders for each three, of the three phases. And so in phase one, which is the intro, which we're in right now, there'll be a folder that says district data. And we'll be working with the district just to drop whatever data they want in there. We then will organize it into three groups and there will be three groups. All members of the strategic planning committee, each group will be assigned a data set. And they will analyze the data for that data set. Group two will analyze the data for that data set. And we're actually looking for trends and patterns across the three data sets that then emerge as your key themes, which become your objectives and your initiatives moving forward.
I do have one question. So we are now entering into, uh, we hope, a building project which has kind of occupied the town's mind for quite some time, um, for better or for worse. How, how will your, I find that uh, most of the conversations I end up having for data we look for end up uh, being very focused on a building project plan or an ability to build a building project. And indeed, this plan does need to be focused on the district and the, the students and what their, all of their needs are and what the full district's needs are, not simply the kind of elephant in the room of the building plan. Do you, have you been in a situation like that before where there is a community issue that is so connected to the schools that it can be difficult to uh, tease out and really focus people on the issues that affect the district as a whole and not simply within the building project? And, and what kinds of ideas have you found work with that?
The way we structure um, the data analysis that happens in phase two authentically brings all of the issues to the top. Now, does it become weighted? We did one community that's uh, facing uh, some challenges in facilities. And facilities kept percolating to the top. Well, facilities became one of their four goals, right? So it was human capital and, and facilities was one of their key areas. But they also had community engagement and communication. They had um, teaching, learning and leading. And the fourth one that they came up with was a social emotional learning. And so embedded in those four, it, uh, facilities didn't become pervasive across those four. It became pervasive in the one it belonged in. Now, does it actually influence the others? Absolutely, if you facilities, then there is communication that needs to occur around, is there a need for that facility? Because you have to convince your community that there's a need for that through feasibility, right? And through, through an override to fund it, I'm assuming. So it, it does end up that it can have some key actions or initiatives that are embedded in more than just capital, but they're appropriately embedded where they belong.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, we're looking forward to it.
Yeah, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
All right, um, this moment, um, we need to properly form the policy subcommittee appoint, uh, have a, some policy subcommittee appointment. Um, we are going to revitalize that uh, policy piece. And um, I am wondering if anyone has a nomination for a policy subcommittee person?
Having been on the policy subcommittee, I, I'm going to nominate Leo because he has not been on the policy subcommittee, but he also has, you know, had really great insight into what other districts do and procedures and I think, you know, he could probably have the time to take it on right now.
I can accept that.
Okay, lovely, and thank you, Leo. And do we have a second?
Oh, come on, kids, don't talk all at once.
Can I nominate Tim? Tim, do you want to do this?
Oh, he's on it.
He's already on it. No, I was gonna ask a point of order whether or not I need to be nominated.
No, he's on it because we haven't dissolved you.
So somebody just needs to second Leo's and then we not vote on it?
Oh, second, I can second that, Claire.
Thank you. And all in favor as Leo is the second person on the policy subcommittee?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, awesome, it passes, thank you, Leo. Wonderful. So this next item, we have to vote on this, right? To assign um, the chair, me, to assign MSBA draft audit report?
I don't, I don't think you need to vote on it, it's more just, you can if you'd like to, but more procedural, just to
That's fine.
Put it on the agenda and frankly, we would normally just do this, but the board selectmen put it on their agenda last night, so we want to be consistent.
Okay.
So we put on, it, it's just the MSBA um, draft audit report. Michael, you have any update on that or any background?
Thanks. I've been getting emails, so.
So what happens is we have to submit paperwork, which we did about six, seven months ago. But they go through an audit process with the owner's project manager. They review all the financials and they hold a portion of the reimbursement back until they finish the audit. The audit has been completed. Uh, they're holding back around, I think it's twenty-four thousand dollars, I just have to double check. Twenty-four thousand, three forty-two. Once we sign the audit, um, I reviewed it, Andrew, the accountant reviewed it, Georgia, our treasurer reviewed it. We had to sign off saying that, that we feel that the audit was, you know, done correctly. We sign it and we send it back to them. Our owner's project manager also has to sign off on it. Once that's signed off, we receive our reimbursement and the project is officially closed with MSBA. Okay?
Yeah, thank you for just an email.
Thank you, Michael.
All right, thank you. Um, any other items since posting?
I don't have any, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Old business, new elementary school project update and school committee, school building committee representatives. Built into interview questions and finalized candidate interviews. So at our workshop, we narrowed our selection down to um, Robert Worth, Meredith Chamberlain, Lauren Platko and Patrick Duffy. Anthony Papatonas was also on that, but he has been selected by the board of selectmen. And so we are down to our four. And um, I am hoping that we can develop or select our interview questions. And I'd also like to, um, it's been brought to our attention that um, Meredith Chamberlain did not submit her um, letter of interest or her CV or resume. However, she did fill out the application as requested. And I just wanted to talk, ask the committee their, their thoughts on that. Because I think this is something that we should discuss openly.
I went back and looked at um, the application as it was, and while it does list a resume and letter of intent, it, it didn't specifically say that it was required. And if it was a piece of the application that was to be required, I wonder why it wasn't included in the Google form? When there's two separate ways it could have been added into the Google form to have it be a requirement, right? So one option would have been that the field form, there's a field form where you can add and have um, a file upload and you can, you know, select a little widget to make that required. If there was a challenge in regards to the memory capacity, you know, if people are uploading a bunch of files, that can be not great for the system on the other side. There also could have been an option to um, take the form field and add a paragraph and any applicant would have been able to copy and paste their resume or a letter of intent, put that in the paragraph box. And again, it would be a required field and it would be that, in that space. And then the applicant wouldn't have been able to submit the application without those two pieces. So I, I guess my question is, was it a requirement? Because I feel like when we talked about what we were looking for, we were looking a lot in my recollection of how Long Meadow was doing their process, right? And Long Meadow was application-based. And I feel like the board of selectmen or select board had recommended the resume piece. But I don't feel like we as a group ever sat and said, we want the resume and letter of intent to be a part of the application process. I also went, looked and looked back. And I don't see anywhere that says if you don't include a resume or a letter of intent, your application is null and void and you will not be considered. So I feel like between those two things, the goal, in my opinion, of this process is to put together the best and strongest team we can to find a solution for the Dale Street School. And if we're going to be splitting hairs in regards to what's a requirement and what's a nice to have, I'm just struggling a lot with any sort of notion of discrediting or dismissing a strong, qualified, experienced candidate that wants to put themselves forward into this position over a nice to have. But that's my opinion.
Any other comments?
I would say one, thank you for the thorough, like honestly, looking at it across the board. I, I looked at it as applications, they're applying for the role. And when I looked at that application, the content of the answers gave me what I was looking for, depending on the candidate. Sometimes it may have been, hey, I looked over here, I looked over there, but I, I just looked at it as that, they applied. But you know, that was kind of binary, you apply for the job. I, 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 my understanding was it was not a requirement that you must do a resume and a letter of intent. A couple of the others had applications without letters of intent or resumes and I didn't, I was just like, okay, that's the body of work, that's how I judge them. So that was my view going to it. You know, I, I thought, I didn't think that, I thought that was okay.
I had a similar take on it.
And I do appreciate though, your looking all the way, looking across, like, because I think that helps. In fact, at least reinforce my, my own opinion, which may not help anyone else, but it, it did help to hear it.
Jess, did you want to add anything?
Not much.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, but no, it's not, I don't think it's worth it. I think that we have four people who were very strong candidates regardless. And uh, you know, there is precedent for people putting their name into the pot very shortly before, uh, you know, I think that, in fact, I think about our last um, when we had to do an interim appointment for uh, Tim Bonfati's role here. And we did an application process. And then, in fact, it was Mrs. Chamber, Chamberlain who, who then put her name in. And we, and the selectmen considered it and I, and I believe that um, that the, that was supported by um, at the time by uh, the same person who wrote the letter questioning Mrs. Chamberlain's uh, or Dr. Chamberlain's.
Application.
Application. So again, if we're going to be open, we need to be open. I think that I looked at one person who um, and in our workshop, uh, who had submitted one application or one Google Doc and the information on that was so brief that I felt as though it wasn't a, a truly kind of heartfelt application. I did not feel that way about um, about Meredith's application, I felt like, and, and I also think that Meredith has a proven track record of volunteering for the schools, for being involved in the schools and has, you know, excellent qualifications. So again, um, that's me not saying anything.
Yeah, she's been um, she's been volunteering on the um, the pilot program for the IUP stuff, the middle school.
Yes.
So she's been on that.
So I mean, there's a really significant breadth of, of knowledge there that I think, uh, you know, why, why shoot yourself in the foot? I don't think anyone, given the number of people that we had apply, I don't think anyone uh, chose not to apply because they didn't feel like they had an adequate resume or, you know, they didn't have the right paperwork, so.
Okay, um, so Michelle, you articulated it so beautifully. I, I feel the same way. I feel that um, I've, I've told you that I, I really reached out to Long Meadow and, and was trying to model their successful path to forming a new SBC in their town. And they're the ones who suggested to me the application. And um, so really, that's what I was personally focused on. And um, and I know it's established practice for the board of selectmen to do the letter of intent and a resume. But um, to me, we have to presume good intent. And I think um, one, one, I am very grateful to all the folks who did apply. And two, I'm, I'm grateful that we've got a good pool of, you know, these final four that we would like to consider. So um, we shall move forward, it sounds like.
Yeah.
And um, with those four.
Sorry, before, are you about to talk about the interview thing?
Yes.
Would you mind um, if I interject a slightly, like on the same path, but slightly before we talk about the interview process?
Please.
So I feel, first off, thank you so much for your leadership because I know you did a lot of work behind the scenes in coordinating and facilitating uh, with the moderator and the select board to even get us to this point. So thank you very much for all the work you did to get us here. When we met on Tuesday morning and we kind of talked about next steps and how we were gonna go forward with this, we had, I guess my, the point I might end up making is like, we have new information that we didn't have on Tuesday morning. When we met on Tuesday morning, there was five openings left for the SBC, right? We knew that three were gonna come from the select board and two were gonna come from us. And in that space, when we were talking about applicants and we were talking about the criteria that we were looking for, when you look at five spots and you have sixteen applicants, there's a lot of different permutations you can look at on how that final twelve is gonna come together. We didn't know at that point in time, when we were meeting, what the select board was gonna do that evening. We didn't know their process. It said, I think, um, whatever their verbiage was, possible vote next to it on their agenda. And what they ended up doing that night was appointing three additional people or they're, they made their three appointments that night, right? So when we left Tuesday morning, there's five openings. But as of right now, there's actually two openings left on the SBC. Ten of the twelve appointments have been made, with the last two pieces being from us. I feel like one of the things we've been touting this whole time is really looking um, holistically at the entire SBC and making sure that it's really well-rounded. And when we look at the individuals that have been selected, um, I see a lot of talent. I see a lot of different backgrounds, I see a lot of um, general expertise. Really great, really great people are gonna be serving on this SBC. But the one thing that I feel is glaringly missing right now are current educational expertise. So we know the solution we're working towards involves a school. And I think it's really imperative that our appointments can be strong advocates for the Medfield students for modern education practices and for twenty-first century learning. And I feel when we were going through the people that, that we were looking at, Robert and Meredith really rise to the top in that place in regards to their wealth of educational expertise. So my question, I guess. In regards to their wealth of educational expertise. So my question, I guess, is. Um, while I know we've talked about having an interview, I guess I feel like having an interview is to gain additional information from a set of applicants. Given that we have new information and that there's only two spots left on the S B C and we are the ones that are gonna round this out. What additional information will we be gaining from an interview process?
Yes. So what I would like to say is that our intention from the very get go. Was to have an application process and an interview. Um, the way I see it personally. Is if I were ever to hire anyone, I would never just look on paper. Yes, I know Meredith. I don't know Robert Worth. Do I know that these folks, folks can commit to the time? And I think. That we have a responsibility to dive deeper. And not just look at paper. We are human beings. We have interactions. I just think it would. Um, it would benefit us. It would benefit the committee as a whole to do that due diligence and to have that deeper dive. To have those conversations. And I think um, you know, what we put on paper. And what we convey in interviews are sometimes different. And so I just wanna be doubly sure. This is so important. It is important to me personally. It is important to this committee, that it's important to this town. And our families. So I really wanna put that extra effort into it. So that's. My point of view, but I can see where, how you can come to that conclusion, but personally, I feel strongly that we need to talk to people.
I am glad to hear you talking about um. How important it is to have an educational component, because I think that when we were at the workshop, the other day when we were all talking together. One of the things that I was not hearing enough was. Uh, we were all very concerned about getting it through. But I was very. I was a little um, taken aback that more of us weren't discussing the, the true educational component and how. There have to be people on this committee who. Are not simply focused on getting something through, cause we could get something through. We could say it costs thirty five million dollars. It's gonna be a real pain for thirty years. And uh, we'll put a nail on something, right? Like we could do that. That would be the performative thing, but it wouldn't do the town any good. It would be bad money spent and it wouldn't be educationally appropriate. So, so I'm glad to hear that we're really. Again, thinking about in that realm of how do we really make sure that we are. Taking on our responsibility of as the voting members, you know, like we will have Dr. Marston, we'll have um. Educators on, on their butt. As voting members, we need to have people who are very clearly focused. On, on the educational component, much as the warrant committee. You know, will have somebody who's very much focused on what the town can afford. And you know, all of these things can come together. The last thing we'd ever want is for our kids to be lost in the sausage. So I, I think that, I really appreciate your point around that.
Yeah, I, I can echo that as well. I think it's extremely important uh, to have that voice. Um, you know, without, you know, if we are going without M S B A guidance, um. That means we can shrink the size of classrooms, we can drop the number, we can do just about anything we want. Um, and without having a sound voice uh, of saying, no, we need to be able to. Only have twenty two kids in a classroom. We need to make sure that there's enough room in this classroom to do X, Y, and Z, and there's enough spaces within the building. To provide the services that are required for a modern instructional and educational system today. And so, and in order to pick up on those items, you're gonna need people with appropriate ear to hear that, you know, at the table, you know.
And somebody who can also transmit that knowledge and put it as. Within the core values and discussions that every member of that community, that cohort of the committee. Will have, right? So that it needs to be, there, there needs to be somebody who's able to push. And educate and always be a little bit of that gadfly. About what it, the, the reason that we are doing this is. You know.
Yeah.
That's really, but great.
I'll just, see, my, my opinion is, I think, my responsibility is to, to put the best team. On the floor, the best possible team players out there. I think um. We're bringing, I, I, I would, I would really begin to question it. We're bringing at least three out of the four. That have that and it's possible, very possible, it's four out of four, uh, cause two are coming from the school committee. And I would just say, I was, I was receptive. I wasn't, you know, if, if two equal candidates. One hat, one hat, and I still would wanna dig a little deeper. That, that's just my, my view and, and it, it is recognizing that three out of the four are coming forward. No matter what. And I just think that um. The, the other dynamic to me was like the, the team builder, the consensus builder, the experience with like committees and some of those things. Were important enough to me that I would, I would like to go forward with the interviews. A, to validate and B, I think we might even learn something from those that aren't selected. That process sometimes helps, no matter what.
And in fact.
I think it's a, it's a good question to bring up. It causes this conversation, which is all healthy. So, but that, that's just how I, like, that's how I've, I've been fairly consistent and. Um, I think it's unlikely that we're gonna choose a third, whatever, and, and you know, a number. That gets the approval without a quality product. Um, but I, I've always think as this S B C starts, it is, you know, the end game in mind is still getting it approved.
Yeah. I also think, you know, the S B C is one thing, but as, as you know, Tim and uh, many other people know. There were many uh, kind of sub-working groups in which the S B C brought in other people for consultation. I think it's really important that we're able to hear.
Yes.
And, and cultivate, you know, that even if there is not. The, a, a role within the narrow amount of people we're able to appoint. We, we found your experience, your perspective valuable and there may be something that the S B C. Will need you for and are you able to still do that?
Excellent.
Right? Would you be willing?
Excellent point. Beautiful. Great. Thank you for bringing that up in the chat. I'll get brought up further ridge discussion. All right. So um, do we have folks who would like to propose um? You know, your top three or four questions and then we can narrow it down and then be done. The way I was personally thinking about it was um. You know, ideally three questions, three minutes each and then a two minute closing statement, you know, so we wanna keep these. You know, within fifteen minutes, um, ideally as we discussed in our workshop. So um, I'm wondering if we should just go down the line if, or if anyone just wanna start.
Uh, do you wanna go down the line, Tim, or?
Sure. You guys might give me a hard time.
Actually.
Three of them were very familiar to me.
When is it that we have not given you a hard time?
So um, no, what I did, uh, I, I, and I, I could, I went to the four, but it was share some lessons learned. I, I don't know if I wanna read them or.
Can you just say the number?
Say the number. I'm gonna take tallies.
I don't.
Number seven?
Yeah, I, I, I did some bold things. So it was just the one, yeah, if that's number seven, it starts with share some lessons learns. Um, what are your top concerns about the project? Um, can you share an experience you've worked with committees, subcommittees that may have lots of divided opinions? And why should you be selected? What specific qualities will you bring to the new S B C?
All right, cool.
And apologize for choosing some that were familiar to me. Wasn't that, I don't like you and I feel like your questions.
Yes.
Um, you know, I've noticed some of these are themed and I also think again, uh, our, our. Our process has been about the elephant in the room and that this one failed. And so a lot of these questions are about like, you know, what will you do when things go off the rails? And I'd like to kind of. Be a little bit more positive than that. Um, so I do think that there is great value in kind of the, the. Question number six, which is really, can you just? Talk to us about what you think are the core parts of your experience that would allow you to have. Impact and positive impact for the kids on our, on our group. Um, and I think that um. I mean, it's, it's always good to talk about, uh, you know, like say number nine is kind of a. A basic, can you share an experience where you've worked with committees or subcommittees that have lots of divided opinions, where you've taken an active role? In driving consensus. To some extent, uh, that will also be the chair's responsibility. Um, but also it's, it's handy to know. One of the things that I, I find and I'm sorry I didn't ask is. Uh, it's not so often that on the S B C. I think people kind of generally come to generally, general decisions and you know, they, they see a, a vision. Uh, but I also think that there is worth in trying to think about. Making that question a little bit more outward facing. You know, have you been involved in uh? In a project in which you need to reach out to the community. To bring more stakeholders in and communicate that. How do we, you know, what is your experience within that? Because that's not really, the internal workings were not the difficult part of that. It was how do you reach out, reach the most people and bring consensus?
Right. So maybe what we can do is still go through these questions and if we have to tweak.
That's what I'm thinking is that, I think that there's a, a tweakable question in here that needs to be about outward facing instead of inward facing.
Okay, so it was number six and did you have two others?
No, I just had number six and then tweaking number nine.
Nine, okay. Super, thank you.
I liked number one, but I revised it.
Okay.
Truncated it just to be, just to say, how will you advocate for the core educational and equity values? Of the Medfield Public Schools in the context of a school building project? So I kinda cut that whole part and then just.
So you digest it is what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, it's good, it's good.
Number four and number seven.
Number four and number seven. Okay, cool. Leo?
I like one, six and nine myself, so.
One revised, he votes.
One revised.
Very good. Um, so I, I thought about three um. Three elements that I thought I would like to be covered in an interview and one was um. The educational element that Jess brought up at the workshop. Two, a reflective piece of the last one, uh, a last um, S B C experience and then. Something about themselves and what they bring to the table. So my choices were number one. I had the same thought, Michelle truncated and um, I chose number six. And then I chose number two, actually. So it looks like our tallies are one.
My comment about number two is that they get leads in, and I like your idea of drawing out the reflection part as opposed to at the number two. Because number two seems to lead into.
We expect this to be really bad. So what are you gonna do about it, right? Which is not where we're going with this, but you know.
Yeah.
I just thought reflection is good.
Yeah.
Because you know what, not that I expect everyone to know all the details of the last project, but at least. What are the big themes and you know, did, did you think about it and how do you wanna make it better this time?
Yeah.
So I think reflection is quite good.
Uh, and hopefully they get things moving fast enough where some of that information can be used, you know, that was some of the work that was done, you know.
Yeah.
Testings, designs, you know, uh, probably have to throw at all the financial stuff, but. Have to be redone, but um, but there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of data that's already there too, you know, the process.
Yeah. Um, so the top contenders were one, six and nine. So we agreed that um, Michelle's truncated version is a good version. And um. Number six, can you talk about your experience professionally as a volunteer? That makes you a strong candidate. That's a. You know, about themselves professionally and um, whatnot. And number nine, can you share an experience where you worked with committees, subcommittees? That may have lots of divided opinions where you have taken an active role in driving consensus. How would we tweak that? Who wanted, Jess, you wanted to tweak that?
I did and, and I'm willing to put that out to the community, uh, to the committee. I just think that there's a, a, there would be value to making that more outward facing.
Okay.
So um.
So but I can.
So really talking about, yeah, really talking about ha- have you been involved in a. You know, uh, in a project in which you've had to bring kind of large and perhaps. Less granularly um, informed. Public and educate them about something that needs to happen. Like, how do you teach a larger community? Right? Because this is really, not only will we be guiding educationally within the committee. But there will be a role for guiding the community about educational goals as well.
Okay. And then we have an option for a, a two minute closing statement.
I like that piece.
Okay. Are we good?
I'm good.
Yeah, just um, the only thing is more point of process again, if it's, if it's three minutes firm. You never know any answer. Yeah, like I would think the reality is an answer might lead to a follow on, hey, you mentioned that, so.
I think if we can stick to the general guidelines, we're not gonna have an alarm, you know. Um, I think, yes.
Yeah, so like in, yeah, I was thinking like three to five.
Bring my visual timer for executive function.
All right. So this is good. All right. Everybody happy with that?
We'll let you know that. Tim, uh, did you attend the Foster School, by the way, in Hingham?
I did not.
They just voted a hundred and eighteen million dollar replacement for Foster.
Yeah, it surprised me. They closed that when I was there.
All right. So um, next on the agenda is community engagement and communication. Um, any updates?
Was that me? Hold on, let me look. Um, head notes. Let's see. Social media is going well. We're trending towards seven hundred on all platforms. Um. I don't know if you guys have received any feedback, but I feel overall people have approached me and said they're happy to see this. It's been helpful for them. In regards to getting meeting updates, having all that information right there. Our first informal forum is scheduled for Saturday, December third. It'll be from ten to eleven in the conference room of the public library. The conference room is in the downstairs area. Um, informal forums are an opportunity for the public to meet with two members of the school committee. Two means we're not in quorum, so we can have a dialogue or discussion on top, topics. The Google form is ready to go out for signups. Um, I think we can send that out next week. Maybe I have it ready to go to post.
Maybe we wanna send it out that Monday after.
I was gonna advertise twice. So next week and the following week.
Yeah.
Okay. Could we pretty please get something in the Hometown Weekly in the patch? Just because the.
You want help? Okay.
So, and if it, you do it on the Hometown Weekly, it needs to be by Sunday night.
Okay.
Just. Please, that would be great.
Um, and then P T O, I was gonna kick back to you um, and just see. From a communication standpoint, were you gonna B C C us or forward us just so like expectations are all the same across all five?
Okay, yes. So um. Tim, with the P T O, I know you met with Nicole. Um, do you wanna a, a high level, cause?
I'm emailing the high school and what am I saying? And I just wanna make sure we're all saying the same thing, right?
Good, yeah. Um, so do you wanna kind of recap what you and Nicole talked about in terms of? The role and purpose of this um, bridging?
Yeah, I guess, um, let me just think it through. Cause like I, I wasn't uh. I, I would, I would hope the. Um, I did have a write-up of what we're trying to do. So I would, yeah, and I would, I would think like that, that described, like I would, I would echo that as part of the outreach. I think I, I've been con- consistent saying, I think the, and I'm coincidentally going to one tomorrow.
Oh, good. Oh, cause you're we love, that makes sense.
And I just, I just set the position, we, we wanna, you know, get a better understanding of how you're operating.
Okay.
I think if I even looked at what my text was, um, you know, how you're operating, how it's working and just get to know you as a group a little bit. Um, and then we, you know, I didn't want it to have a, like, a formal role there. Something to think about, like in the, the initial, it's just kinda like, hey, how does things go in and there to observe? And then um, a little later in the year would be a follow-up with an agenda. I, you know, you, you might say, hey, I would love to hear your input on X, Y, or Z.
Okay.
But it's probably more related to what you learned at the beginning.
Got it, okay.
Um, and by design, I said this, I, I don't wanna be overly, you know, I think we wanna at least be consistent.
Yeah.
So the expectation is you've attended at least two meetings by the end of the year. You've probably had a co- you know, a few conversations, some of them you might be doing anyways.
Right.
But with, with the leadership to just get a feel and um, sometime in probably May or June, they would just say, hey, these are some of the things we, I learned from this group.
Yeah, and I think, so Michelle, in your case, my case, I'm going back to Dale, is really to reconnect with schools that we're not in. And that we're not a part of that, um, and we want to gain greater understanding.
And I was even gonna say, like, I mean, it may or may not be relevant, but the one, the. And I was even gonna say, like, I mean, it may or may not be relevant, but the one, uh, Sophia, who who is within there. I like the way I, I, that's, I can almost look at what my text was, but it was very. Open-ended, hey, is is, is there room on the agenda? If there isn't, we can do it again. And um, I I think that's the key.
And elementary schools have two.
Yeah, it was, it was just Sophia happened to reach out.
Cool, makes sense.
So I, just can I circle back quickly to the? Yeah, I got that, see, it's down here, it's gonna happen, um. Is this something else that we can ask, uh, Steve and Missy and Holly to put in their kind of like? Blogs or whatever they do for parents? And we'll put it in the high school, obviously, in the middle school, but just say that that's an opportunity.
Beautiful, oh yes, so because so for the high school, you'd have to send it to.
I remember, I remember, it's all the MCPE stuff coming back to me.
So Michelle's gonna do all social media stuff and Jess, you are kindly gonna reach out to the. Schools and Patch and Hometown Weekly. Gracias, thank you very much. Alright, thank you, um. Letter of intent, you folks have been so patient, Energy Committee folks, thank you.
Hi, I'm Hilly Cassas from the Energy Committee and thank you so much for having me here today, and I have with me Paul and Byron. And uh, we came be- before you um, a couple of weeks ago to discuss. Some potential solar installations on school properties. And uh, we really would like you to consider signing a letter of intent so we can move forward, but we know that you have. Questions about it and I'm hoping that tonight we can address some of them. And uh, you can hopefully consider moving forward with signing the letter of intent next, at the next meeting. It really is an important project for us to move forward and I'll go into this as we talk. And the letter of intent is really no commitment to the school. And would allow the 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 uh, select provider and us to move forward with the planning. So we can show you what it, what it might look like. So um, I want to give some background to you, but also to the watching public, why we're proposing this, where we're coming from. So um, this goes back to twenty twenty-one when the town met, a town meeting approved a resolution that. Net or to, for the town to support a net zero twenty fifty goal. And that resolution calls on all town boards and committees to take action in the furtherance of that goal. And uh, we're now working with a number of committees and we found that the school committee and the school department have been very receptive partners. In some projects that are already ongoing in building electrification and energy efficiency. So we hope to continue doing that and hope to continue to support the school in in that journey. Slide please. We um, have made uh, both a um. An inventory of where our greenhouse gases come from in town and also a climate action plan that specifies some of the solutions we're proposing. And um, as you can see, the municipal buildings um, contribution to our. Greenhouse gas emissions is only three percent, so you might say that is not a huge difference in the town. But we also know that the town buildings, there's only twelve of them and the school has at least five of them and they're large buildings. And any projects that would be undertaken will have a large impact on that. And on top of that, uh, we hear over and over from the community that they want to see the town. Take leadership action in the uh, in in climate action and model. And obviously the town has great visibility, especially for the young people, so I consider that really important. The priorities areas that we're considering to to drive down the greenhouse gas emissions are renewable energy. And then building efficiency and electrification and um. Vehicle electrification and reducing mileage, so today we're going to talk about the renewable energy part. Clearly, we need to green our energy if, or decarbonize our energy if we want to decarbonize our buildings and um. Vehicles. This is just an illustration where the state is planning to go and where Medfield needs to go. If we want to fulfill our our net zero twenty fifty goal, you can see um, the steep line between. Twenty twenty and twenty forty in that graph, we really need to take action on a lot of fronts. And the sooner we do that, the better, in the, their climate action plan that we um, propose, we actually want to uh. Uh, green our, you know, how, green our electricity by a hundred percent by twenty thirty, you know, have. For for renewables there, so um, the sooner the better, uh, next slide please. And the town is already, um, oops, sorry. The town has already installed a bunch of um, uh, a number of projects, we, uh, the wastewater treatment plant has been in operation for. A number of years, um, and on the right you can see a beautiful area shot of the DPW. That roof project is about to be installed, the panels are already at uh, the DPW building, it's just a matter of. Days, weeks, whatever, to get that to going, and in the background you can also see um, the old landfill. That's a future project that's not ready yet because landfill is not um, available at this point yet. So why do we want uh, solar at the schools? Next slide please, actually, two slides. The um, the schools have a large part of, or the largest buildings and large areas open. That are municipally owned. Um, and um, that. Those can be used for solar, um, obviously, the more solar we put on, the more we decarbonize our electricity. And the more we reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, next slide please. Any solar that we put on so- school properties would also help offset the energy use within the buildings. And we project that that energy use will just go up um, as we electrify and um, and all the the uh, things. Then we uh, we, we want to help the school stabilize the energy cost. We all know what has been going on in the world and we project that the electricity costs as well as gas and diesel will just continue to go up. So by locking in a certain rate now for the next twenty-five years, you have a stable. Capital budget, uh, operations budget item that is not gonna increase with inflation or other costs, that's just gonna be there for the next twenty-five years. And uh, this, we project that on top of that, that will save a ton of money um, for this. We, we would like to help the school create a visible reminder that the schools and the town. Do want to take the leadership role and do want to take climate action, and lastly, I think especially the schools. Would. Send a great signal to the students, actually to people of all ages, that uh, climate action is happening. And that there's hope that they can leave, lead a decent life. And uh, I think the the discussion about mental health, uh, that you all had and we all had at home. And uh, the schools are having. Will really benefit from knowing that climate anxiety ha- has been addressed by by the schools. So, good, next slide. So what are we proposing? Sorry, so the the recommendation by the Energy Committee is really twofold one, one is that. We propose, we we think the best project right now to tackle is uh, canopies on school properties. And we also think that at this point using PPAs for those particular project is the best way forward. Uh, part of that is that um, the roofs are not available. Um, we all know that the the roofs of all the schools need to be replaced before we we can add solar to them. And um. And we, you know, and the other part is, uh, we we ca- we really want to move forward with solar also. Because of incentives and and project available, programs available that makes, make it attractive right now. And the reason we're, we are proposing a PPA, and this was subject to a lot of discussions within the Energy Committee too. Is that we um, especially for canopies, the initial capital cost is very high and the return. Uh, is not as as high as if those would be in in rooftop solders. So also knowing that there is not a lot of capital in the park right now. We, we really think that for this kind of project, a PPA is the right way to go. So I know that there were some questions about, you know, how how the coverage would work and what the capital. Savings might be, so I have Paul here who can talk to that.
I'm trying to walk you through, so this is sort of, Hilly talked about a portfolio of projects, canopies, there's some. That are farther along in the planning stage than others, the parking lot canopies versus um, say the the canopy over. The football field, so if you look here, the first thing is if you add them together in terms of greening. The supply, if you add all those up, it's about eighty-seven percent of last year's consumption of electricity for the schools. So you're converting that from buying from ever source, it's probably generated with natural gas and the carbon implications of that. And generating it off the roof and stuff, so there's that switch to the clean piece of it. And just the economics of it, if you take the top row, which is the farthest along the parking canopy. Alright, so just wa- go across the row, so the system size, it's by far the largest system of. In the portfolio here by a factor two X, so it produces about seven hundred forty thousand kilowatt hours per year. The consumption at the high school here on the meter for the high school is just over a mega one point one million. So what it does is that array will generate about sixty-nine percent, sixty-five percent of the high school power requirements, alright? So um, I'll I'll go briefly, so how the model changes, so option one and how you get to the savings. Uh, almost six hundred thousand dollars over twenty-five years, so you do nothing today, you buy power, you pay two things for it. One, for someone to generate for you, two is to get it to the school, so there's a generation component. And then there's a transmission component, so add the two together, that's what you pay. So what we assumed here in sort of the payback was for twenty twenty-three. The schools are locked in a generation rate of just under nine cents a kilowatt hour, right? So that's contractually bound, so you know that rate is, it's about two and a half cents roughly to get the electricity here. So you add the two together, the school's locked in to, for eleven point five seven cents for next year, right? So that's, you can count on that. What happens after twenty twenty-three is a whole different story, cause now you go back out to bid, alright? So what we built in here was consumption stays the same. At the roughly eleven point five cents per kilowatt hour, right? That's the do nothing, and it grows inflation adjusted two percent a year, so your costs go up two percent a year for twenty-five years. So that's sort of what you pay if you did nothing, if you switch to the PPA. We would pay essentially select. Nine point four four cents per kilowatt hour, so basically two cents a kilo- kilowatt hour less. In lieu of paying ever source or, you know, the utilities, so that's the delta and you take it over twenty-five years. And that's how you come up with the six hundred thousand dollars roughly. Now, we think it's conservative for a couple of reasons, one is, we just went out and looked. You're locked in for eleven point five cents per kilowatt hour for next year, if you went to the open market today. The grade class that the high school's in, you basically, if you add the generation and transmission charge, you're twenty-four point six six cents today. So get ready for a surprise in twenty twenty-four when the rates go up, I don't know how much. So if the rates you would pay in twenty twenty-four were above eleven point five seven times two percent adjusted for inflation. That would add to the savings, so that's just sort of how it would work. So these numbers, you know, rates were above that in any of the out years, the savings would be even higher than this. So um, that's, Michael, I mean, do you sort of look through it, do you generally conservative? Yeah, so the, and there's not a money paid by the schools or the town, it's. We just switch over, sign the contract and you start paying the roughly nine, nine cents or so from the high school. And you'll see for each of the projects, there's different rates there because one project may be more expensive than the other. Or subject to less incentives than the other, like domestic steel and so forth, so. So, you know, basically, if you look at the financials, it's a way to offset almost all the schools' consumption by converting it to green. The second thing is, it's a million seven over twenty-five years or higher in terms of cost savings. So it's sort of the.
One of the questions we got last time after the presentation was, why go this model versus buying? The solar panels are, as a town or as the school, like what's the, what's kind of the discussion there?
Um, I mean, the rough numbers, you, Byron can jump in, so to put a canopy up there, you've got steel, you've got. Construction, you know, so it's probably close to two million dollar bill cost for that array.
Yeah, probably, probably considerably more than that, so it would require getting capital for the town, one of the things that we did talk about though. Is if, if the town does have an appetite to buy some or own some or all the projects. We could look at it as part of a portfolio, so really the, the key item that we need to do right now to justify the project. Is is confirm the incentive, the incentive award. And also confirm that there's availability on the line, that we can submit with ever source and and put energy onto the grid. And so the way these projects are set up is typically we'll fund all of, all of those costs. If the town wanted to consider owning or buying it, we could still proceed down that path and the town could have the option of buying it. Before, you know, the system goes live and there are also options to buy the system throughout. If years seven, ten and fifteen, so if if the town ultimately wants to own the systems. You know, we can monetize the tax benefits in terms of a low PPA rate and you'd still be able to own those systems throughout, throughout the term.
Yeah, so I mean, you can, signing the LOI doesn't bind you to a commercial, you know, PPA rather than that. We had a forty-five minute discussion with the Board of Selectmen Tuesday, two days ago. And, you know, to go in and say to buy it, we have to put up the front capital, right? We've gotta pay for the build of it, we've gotta fi- hi- hire the project managers to do it. And then once it goes live, we have to do all the maintenance on it, now, there's not a lot, but.
That's my question about maintenance, so they own the maintenance as long as it's there.
If it's PPA, it's turnkey, it's all select, so. The other is the uh, state of route generally is, is the town in a position and has a desire to fork over. I know, five million dollars of debt to to fund that, right? When there's still, generally, a whole bunch of aside, if you buy it, build it, own it. You probably make out better, but it's all the risk is on us and you need the money upfront.
The the other piece of it too, is there is a timing component, so if you were to go out and raise a bond and everything like that. Prior to, you know, securing the incentive and the interconnection, by the time you actually get there, the incentives will be. Will be long gone by then.
Yeah, I don't know if you heard this at the last meeting, but when Michael was talking about costs. For our energy for next year, we're looking at a sixty-four percent increase in our electricity costs. And I mean, I've signed the warrants, that's, that knocks teachers. Out of, you know, like that's, I'm not saying teachers, but that knocks good chunks of. Of cash that we could be directing towards kids, so I understand the speed. Uh, issue, I also understand the lack of risk issue. You know, truly, when I look at this, my largest concern, and I know that Michael has vetted this. And Dr. Mars and I have vetted this, and we also think that it's a really important thing to show to our kids, to Hilly's point. That we do care about what is happening to the world that we're leading in. Um, sometimes, I don't know if you've noticed this in town, but sometimes when new things go in that are visually obvious. We have a very hard time accessing them. So I'm wondering, what is your, what is your nan tucket plan for this? I mean, can we put cedar singles on it? Or um how do you help the town understand the importance? Of the canopy in something that may look, you know, like we can tuck it on. The roof of the town garage, we can tuck a solar array back behind the animal shelter. But once it's at Memorial School in the parking lot or on Blake, you know, in the Blake parking lot or whatever. You're out, you're living large, you're like right out there. And I think that I can say as a committee member. I don't think we have the bandwidth to take on one more, you know, kind of whack a mole. Kind of social media campaign. So how can the Energy? Committee and the town support their initiative, their goal that will be on the school property that helps. All of us. How do you, how do you plan to do that is really my my question. And I'm being very direct about it.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely. And we've thought about this.
All of this takes away from our kids.
So I just have a couple of questions that you can probably maybe answer some of that. So one, um. We're doing doing the New New Deal Street project, new elementary school project. Um we learned a lot about solar and alternative energies and we were. Putting solar on the roof, geothermal, electric boilers, et cetera, heat pumps, all that. Um the consultant that worked with us at that point said that purchasing wouldn't be a smart thing to do. It would be better to do a PPA because. The technology changes and is evolving all the time. And if you purchase something in two thousand twenty two. And you purchase it in in five or six, seven, eight more years, it's defunct, you need to upgrade, that's all on you. Whereas if you get a PPA, it's on the owner to upgrade and make sure that we have the most um modern. You know, whatever that whatever that component might be that we need. Is that accurate? Is that something that?
Some of the technology, some of the technology does need to get changed out throughout. So the inverters would be changed out throughout the process. The system definitely does need to be maintained. So Select, we're based in Hockington and we have. We have a whole services group that monitors these projects. They all put their production online. And so if there's an alert or if there's, you know, one of the inverters needs to be changed out. We can roll the truck and and get there and do it. So we're managing six hundred projects in Massachusetts currently. And so this would be, you know, added added to that.
But if we own that, you don't do that.
If 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 we if you owned it, then you could sign a services agreement. So effectively, we would be a vendor to you in terms of maintaining the the agreement over time or the the project over time. So there is a model that that could do that. In terms of changing out specific technology. Typically, you know, all the panels that we use are tier one panels with a twenty five year warranty. So we would not be necessarily expecting to change out the panels unless there was like a drastic change in technology. We're planning to stay with those panels, but then change out the other equipment that we need to throughout that term.
Which would most likely, over that period of time, the technology would be advancing.
Yeah, I mean, we would certainly look at it opportunistically, you know, if 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 there was a game changing technology, but typically. Hey, you know, we would expect, we can only model based on what we see today. And so we're making the decisions based on that. But to your point, you know. Always watching what what's what's out there for sure.
And my second question, I thought what you showed last last meeting a couple weeks ago. It showed that this, with the canopies at the high school, the savings would be four thousand dollars a year. And I wish I had it in front of me, but I just, that number was just.
Yeah, so I think.
Year, year one, so year one it was four thousand.
Think of it this way, is on this one, so if, what is it, nine point four cents in this model, right? You will pay them forever for generation that rate, right? So the the savings in the first year are smaller and they grow over time because remember. We're assuming that electricity rates, that if you didn't do the panels would grow over time. So you've got sort of a flat rate. Versus a rate that's growing. So that's why the savings per year get bigger and bigger over time.
Okay.
Hence, it would not be a sixty four percent increase because it would be locked.
You could lock that in.
But do we have that modeled over the twenty five years?
Yeah, that's flat for twenty five years.
Yeah.
But the save, but the savings each year. I know that I see nine thirty one.
Increase, you know, as as.
But do we have the exact savings for every year as as I'm asking? Because four thousand at the high school is less than two percent of our total spending.
I know.
Electricity at the high school. So I just, we want to see what it looks.
Yeah, so obviously you can't do that because you don't know what twenty twenty five electricity rates are. So that would be, you know, your comparison of what you would pay if you didn't have the PPA. But we know that they're gonna increase. And so what what uh Paul was saying, if you if you did the this. Didn't have the negotiated price for next year, but went with the standard price that some institution like the school would take. We, just on the back of an envelope, can uh calculation came up with like three and a half million. In for only the high school canopy. Over the twenty five years. So, you know, the the savings really vary a lot depending on what the actual electricity rate. On the market would be and and the savings you would incur. And right now, the 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 rate you have locked in is unbelievably low. It's much lower than the residential rate and everything.
Thank you, Michael.
I mean, it's just like eye popping below.
You should see the other guy.
So what, I mean, what you're betting on is in twenty twenty four or in twenty twenty three negotiating for twenty twenty four. You know, you work, you know, your magic even more, right?
Question about the canopies. You know, the first time I ever saw one, um was actually at a school on Wayland, um and I went to the main office and. And it was the middle of summer, it was scorching hot. And I was like, oh, it's nice to have these canopies because my car's not gonna be getting fried, right? Outside of the summer car uh keeping cool uh benefit, are there any other benefits to the canopies? Physically on the premises that offer, I guess, shelter from the rain, right? Or things of that nature.
So, yeah, I mean, from from what what we've seen. Our customers use canopies for, it's it's a combination of things, but the weather is certainly one of them. You know, shading is certainly one of them, snowfall, keeping the the cars out of the snow. But as a learning environment and as a learning lab, they're accessible for students in classrooms to see. Here's the panel, here's the wire, here are the inverters, here's how it goes back to the school, here's how it works, and here's how it's powering the school. And we actually have like monitors, you know, that are accessible online, so you could show it on a laptop. But that is unique to a canopy, whereas if it's on a roof. You know, there's a liability issue to have thirty five students walking around on a roof, you know, just just kidding. But but no, no, seriously, for for a canopy, it does make a unique learning environment. Um and we have seen that. And some of the facilities folks have talked about um using those shaded areas for either. Like emergency response training or other types of training where they're looking for an outdoor shaded environment. So we. We have seen them in those those capacities as well, too.
I have more questions. I did receive a question about. When you have canopies. Individual ones, you know, because they park a new canopy and there's bird nests everywhere. And that was a concern.
I was gonna ask like, very similar, I was gonna ask like the op- the alternative to Leos, is is there any, you know, things that are outside of the services of the contract? Gotchas has seen other things that we made.
Sounds like a natural habitat for birds. I mean, that's like a plus, right?
Yeah, there is, there there is ongoing maintenance. So if there were nests or things like that, we typically. Either we could do it, the facilities team could do it. There's not. I'm sure that it happens once in a while, but I think it's the kind of thing you just be aware of and then and then remove the nest. But there aren't really other things like that. There might be. You know, uh perhaps some maintenance in terms of paint over time, you know, it's it's marine grade paint. So you really shouldn't need to paint it too often. There's considerations, we've got little um. Paint samples, so you can choose the the color paint that you want. But typically. There really aren't that many issues. I mean, I'm sure that sometimes birds roost there, but. We haven't heard of that as being a a big concern.
I hear a big struggle with the colors, picking of the colors. That's.
So really, and all of you actually, so back to Jess's question. Um because that's what resonates with me as well. So but what I'm hearing and um. Is that if we sign this letter of intent, we're really, we're getting in, we're getting in that first tranche hopefully. And um there is no commitment. That's when we start to do the deep dives. That's when maybe you guys can have a public forum. So, you know.
Yeah, let let me actually talk you through. So.
Okay. So can I have the next slide, please?
So the the Energy Committee would take the lead on on chaperoning this project through. And uh one is obviously the public outreach. And we have made a sort of a sample um timetable on that. So we would start with publications, we have the hometown weekly there, but of course, that's also the patch and you know, all that sort of thing. And then we would create um a sort of an informational handout to go out that. You know, this we would make accessible to you, so you can post it. And typically, we we sort of send it out to all sorts of outlets uh that we have and post it in the. Library and in the in the um shops and that sort of thing. And then we would like to have an in-person program about solar. In particular about this project in February also. And we would make sure that people who are directly. Butters to any of the projects would be invited with a letter, so they know that's going on and they can be heard at those forums. And then uh we are collaborating with Sustainable Medfield. Uh they have a network of other civic associations. Groups here in in Medfield that they meet quarterly. Um quite a quite a number of groups that come to join and talk about sustainability. So we would uh present the project there and ask them to take it to their membership as well. And then um in the in the later spring, we would make sure that the staff who would be working. With or around this um is trained or or knows sort of. We address any of their concerns if they have any.
I might put the staff at the very top there since.
That's maintenance training, right?
But I'm also talking about school staff and, you know, they start to hear that they're good, they're.
Oh, I see that sort of.
Their parking lots are going to be covered. There's this big, and it ends up in the hometown weekly before. We even kind of tell them about it, right? So I think.
Yeah, I mean, if we could help us, you know, find find the right outlet for that, uh we'd be happy to do that.
Now, is there a piece for, sorry, is there a piece for town meeting?
It's, yeah, it's a time timeline is the next one.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other is on this, this is our first pass, so if we need to reorder things.
No, but this is good that you're considering this because this is helpful and this makes it.
Right, and.
Is there any concern that you will need to work within a changing of zoning laws? Because I do know that Medfield has some very strict ideas about uh canopies at gas stations and overhangs. So has that.
Good point. I don't.
Has that started yet? Is this within that zoning? Because I would really hate to see it get too far before that happens.
They are moving forward. It's not owned by the town, but Kingsbury Club's putting up canopies in their parking lot.
So they haven't had any zoning issues or they just haven't thought about it yet?
No, they're they're moving ahead and so.
Yeah, this is why everybody has to get wet and rain and pump gas.
But the Kingsbury didn't have an issue with canopy per se, but they ran into issue that they have underground infrastructure. That uh nobody wanted to touch in case, you know, that's, there was insurance issues basically. Nobody was able to pay for removing the canopies.
They did run through the zoning process.
Yeah, that that wasn't an issue at all.
So that's not an issue. Good.
So do we anticipate losing parking spots? Reduce the number of parking spot?
No, I don't think we would be. There's, if if there was any reduction in parking spots, it would have to do with just. The few locations for vertical posts, the location of the canopy, particularly here at the high school. We're expecting those posts to be ahead almost where the the field of the lawn meets the pavement is where we would expect to have them. If they were back just a little bit, there might be, you know, it it might be a foot into the parking area, so we'd have to look at that. But we're not looking at like significant or even a few, you know, spots missing.
Would you folks do a rendition of of what it would look like in the actual, in this space? Not, you know, what they look like generally or what they they could look like, but actually superimpose them in this space so people could see what it looked like.
Yeah, we certainly, we have the footprint where they would be. And then as we go forward with the specific due diligence and and. You know, the scanning and everything else, we'll take soil samples and that will determine where the footers go. And at that point, you can do like. More of like the full um uh engineering rendering that would be there.
And that's some of the chicken and the egg with the LOI, is LOI says intent serious allows us to go to. Ever source, right, to get to some of the smart group program and also gives them some complication that they'll spend some of their own money.
Have you guys seen Lincoln Sudbury? Have you seen theirs, their canopies?
The what side?
Where? Lincoln Sudbury, have you seen their parking lot canopy? And that's the only frame reference I have for a school, so that's kind of what I'm going on.
Yeah, Lincoln Sudbury, um I'm I'm familiar with that canopy. It was installed years ago and that that is not one of the ones that that we did. We did one at Stonehill College. Which, well, we've done a few of them in Framingham and and elsewhere, but um but. That one is is going to be very similar, but the, one of the differences for that one is is it's a full water management system. With under decking and everything like that, which would be an option. This one is the full canopy, but it's not like with the with the um. With the full water management and the decking underneath it. So it's gonna be very similar in terms of look, but it's not exactly the same.
I mean, renditions are really important.
Yeah.
Like you drive down that that entryway here, it it changes the the whole sightline of this area, so.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely do that.
Right, and that's clearly we want to get there. So, you know, we can't get there unless we have the letter of intent. So if I could have the next slide. So this this is an idea of where the that's the sort of basic steps that need to be taken. And the letter of intent is needed to uh file the pro- the program with the smart program. So these are. This is a program where um if you generate solar electricity, the state pays you back uh per kilowatt hour. And there are blocks set aside uh in each block, consecutive block, as it fills up. Gives you less money back. Right now, when we started talking about this in June, we were in block six. Now we're in block seven and it's filling up quickly with people, you know, after the the federal laws changed. There's people installing solar left and right. And. Once we have the letter of intent, we can file and at least secure a spot in that queue. So we we can try and stay in block seven and not move to block eight, which would, you know, lose us money. And then uh we, at the same time, we would apply to for the interconnection, that is an application to ever source. Ever source can only. Take in so much solar in one area. And if that fills up, then I don't even know what happens, you know. I guess it's, they have to install new infrastructure, right?
Yeah, um if there's capacity, if there's no more capacity on the circuit, then they have to upgrade. You know, their infrastructure and their distribution and their substations. Um and that can take a really long time. So.
And the other is on cost is the project that trips them over the capacity limit bears the full cost of the upgrade. So if they're ninety nine point nine percent capacity and you, this puts them over than the cost. To do that gets dumped on this project. So it's why you want to.
Right, we you do want to, we do want to move ahead. There is not a deadline. You can hear that we're sort of. Trying to get ahead of other people filling up those those blocks. And of course, the last uh benefit of the letter. Letter of intent is that Select can go ahead and do all the engineering, the rendering, the pricing, um and that sort of thing. You know, they they need to figure out uh how to secure the steel and the. And the materials because there are differences in the federal subsidies right now, whether it's domestically sourced or not. So then we we would go ahead with the public outreach and and we would be happy to work with you or, you know. Listening to the feedback that you're getting channeling to us, so that we can um, you know, address some of the concerns. And maybe find some other ways to communicate with the public. So then um in April, the you would take a final decision after you've considered uh the proposal. And in May, we would take it to a town meeting where the town meeting would approve the. And in May, we would take it to town meeting where the town meeting would uh approve the lease of the, of the land. And then select tells me they can start construction over the summer, but that would have to be coordinated with you. I know that there's concerns about shutting off certain areas, um so you know, I guess the timing would be.
The, the, the timing is up to the town from, from, and I did, I specifically was. Talking to the, to the construction team about this specific lot. Cause I understand that for the high school, it does get full. Um, and, and right now we're, we're working on a project installing a, a system down at the Stone Zoo. Um, which is also area constrained for their parking lot. And so we look at doing a phased approach where we can do um foundations. And then we can come back and we can do, you know, the, the actual structure that sits on top of those foundations. But we're familiar with, with working with campuses and schools. And so basically, we look at our timeline from the school's perspective and from our perspective. Would want the system online as early as practical. But what that specifically means in terms of transportation, you know, the routes, the travel, the parking. How it's zoned off, um would have to be very specific in terms of like working with the school for what you'd want. So presumably if everything went perfectly quickly, um you know, all green lights along the way. We could presumably get started with the foundations this upcoming summer. Um, and then that might bring us a little bit into the school year or into the autumn. If that's not acceptable, then we might have to look at, at what it would look like over the next calendar year. But um we need to, we'd obviously just need to work with the school on, on what works for that.
Is there options uh in this for onsite storage if we were to say? Ten years from now instead of replacing a generator, right? Uh would onsite storage be an option that could be fueled from that or is that?
Like that battery storage?
Yeah.
Um, so that is one thing that we can definitely take a look at. Um, we have interval data. We're looking at evaluating batteries now for this system. Um, if, if it's, was in support of the economics and it worked for the school, then it would make sense. If not, then we would not be doing it. So it's, um, we would be looking at the battery as more of an, an economic. Driver for the school as opposed to a resiliency.
Right.
Um, cause the school has generators and everything like that that it would need to in the event of an emergency. So that's, that's how we're currently looking at it. Just curious.
All right.
And you know, to, to the battery storage, I mean, hey, if the town manages to transition to electric school buses. You have already very powerful batteries available. Um, that, you know, would give you backup as well as um through the connected solutions. Uh program in the summer payback, you know, real cash back.
If you lose power, you gotta drive the buses in and plug them into the building like.
Yeah, there's all sorts of interesting options. You know, you could drive them into the, into the gym. You know, they have no exhaust, but they can cool or heat your.
I just don't want anybody out there in, in storyland to think that we are actually entertaining. Bringing in a new fleet of electric buses, right? Like just get that off the rumor mill. That is not happening right now. Can't do five million dollars for a solar system. They sure as heck aren't going to be doing five million dollars. Not for two or three buses.
The only other thing I was saying is, you know, we showed it a portfolio of projects, so you don't need to proceed with all at once.
Thanks for the reminder. Yeah, perfect.
And same with the construction, if one site is easier than the other, you know. So I think I have one last slide, just a summary. Um, so, oh no, that, that was it already. So the, you know, the, the. The LOI is really not a commitment to, uh to anything. It just helps us move forward and explore this project. Uh it secures a spot in the interconnection queue. It secures a spot in the smart queue. Um, and it just allows select to, to uh start designing and planning for it. And it gives us time to do public outreach and uh education. And uh then you have the opportunity to confirm moving forward in the spring.
And one, one thing I thought of as she was speaking that wasn't on here. We'd be open to if anyone had suggestions of how to involve the students in this. So it's not just us reaching out and saying we're doing it. How can we pull in students into it? And do you have any suggestions on that?
So really, my last question is, what else do you need from us? What other information would you want to have so you can make that decision?
My, my only ask, I, I mentioned it to Michael earlier, I think just helping some validation on the financial model. And I, I just, I see just like on the one hand sixty five percent of total. I'm saying, I think that's total consumption and. So I think like, that's great and it's what's total cost. You know, if it's four thousand over four million or forty, I, I just, you know, so some validation from Michael, I think would help. Us if we are, you know, thinking about voting in December.
Yeah, we've, we've run some, a sort of a range of projections and there's definitely a range because we just don't know what the electricity price will be.
I know, we're eventually though, that, those are called assumptions.
Right, right, right. And, and that's why, why we have a range of, of estimates that we've run.
Also might be helpful if you could give us a list of projects that we could take field trips to take a look at. It might be helpful, yes.
And that is something maybe we can arrange with you, you know, or you can arrange with us.
Great.
Thank you. We'd be, I think there would be genuinely the support with the town and the town meeting, like it would almost be. Uh recognize the capacity that we have to drive that is limited. Getting the town, like it would be, I, I think of it as more M E C led with our support.
Yeah, right.
Which is not, yeah, it's just a reality that we all, otherwise nothing happens without town meeting.
Yeah, I cannot under emphasize or over emphasize how important it would be for you to have a robust. Educational plan in place.
Absolutely, and, and you know, this is, this is.
I think one of the, one of the pieces in terms of the educational plan that I think would be, would be helpful is, is. As we go through the process and, and confirm the, the incentive and confirm. That we're able to put solar like on this area with, with ever source and go through the interconnection process. All those facts, I think, really help in terms of instill confidence in the project. So as we're talking to neighbors and we're talking to the town, we've already completed these steps. And so there are just less variables or less unknowns in, in part of that process. Um, as, as we advance, you know, and I think that having that upfront is, is super helpful. Just in terms of talking to the community.
Certainly hope so.
And just uh to help us on that, just major concerns, I hear the aesthetics of canopies is being a huge one. Are there other, just like top three?
I don't know that Medfield has ever needed something other than aesthetics. When it comes to like, when they would choose to like saying, they don't want to do it. You know, you do have to think very specifically about the visual, right? Because that is the, the only thing that people will tangibly wake up every morning and look out their window or drive down North Street. And say, oh, you know, like the town is changing so much. And we can't even control our growth anymore and look, there's a boloko over there and then there's these canopies over here and we're losing our historic. I mean, you know, you, you and I have lived here long enough to have heard this again and again and again.
Right.
So it really does need to be a robust kind of discussion about moving more into the future and how important this is. But there will be pushback. I hope that I am being pessimistic in this.
Well, you know, I can tell you that, you know, I'm leading a lot of sort of discussions about this and I, of course I do have pushback.
Yeah.
Not everything is data-driven pushback. Um, but, but I can also say, you know, if you then say, you know, you're gonna sit on the bleachers. And not sit in the rain and not sit in the sun, you know, there are benefits to that.
I'm right there with you, you, you preaching to the choir, but.
But so I actually want to say.
Eyes wide open.
On top, uh on behalf of the energy committee and you know, the energy community, the citizens here that support this, this. I'm really grateful for, of your receptiveness of these projects, just to even consider them.
Absolutely.
And it started with the chargers this summer, right? They went in, not a problem, so.
Yeah, this, uh, the charges, I, well, actually, oh, no, uh with the, you know, I think we're working now on the um. The I T, the software and we're also, this is actually something I should come and talk to you about as well, the uh, the rate structure. And I don't know who, Michael, do I talk to you about this? Yeah, so I um, I would talk to the board of selectmen on Tuesday. And they basically said, we want to have the same rate structure at the school. Let's see what they're doing. I know, somebody has to take the first step.
All right, thank you so much.
Come back to you about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next is the um Medfield School Committee policy. And um tonight is going to um walk us through this.
Yeah, sure. So in the updated packet, I think has um, has this, but let me just, just describe it because it. Sometimes the terminology we, we use historically. And when you read through the policies, sometimes it just gets a little confusing. Um, so, so last week I suggested that we, uh and we've talked about this for a while, but we should start with our public input. And um I shared our existing policy and the M A S C suggestion. Um, and I, I said, I would like to review that along with some of the content from the workshops at M A S C. So it wasn't, it weren't identical and make a recommendation on um an updated public input policy. So um today, uh you know, we, we've, we've provided that. Um, and then, and sharing it's in the packet is the proposed policy for uh the school committee to read. Um, the term we use for that is informational. Um, sometimes there's somebody calls first reading. This is not officially the, if, if you follow our policy. Um, so the intention is to share it with you. Everybody can read through it and the public can read through it. And then we would like to suggest that we add it as a discussion item um next week.
As a first reading?
Yeah, and during, in the discussion item, this is now from memory, I don't have all, all the words, or actually I do. It would be the first reading where we can go through it, a response from the superintendent. Um, if there are any other committees responsible that need, need to weigh in on it. Um, in this case, it would probably be, um, you know, the, the policy committee would have some, some uh, some say on it. And um we can discuss it and somebody can say, hey, I'd like to see this or that, or why did we think about it that way? And um, in, in depending where we go, that could lead to another discussion at a follow-on meeting. Or everyone could say, we really like that the way it stands.
And a second reading and a vote?
Yeah, and, and I think there, there is some things, I think we are also starting to look at our own processes. You, you, it, that describes it as a sequence. I think to me it would be natural that a vote would follow at a subsequent meeting. So I just want to be clear. Yeah, that, correct, that was kind of in line with what they, they've described it at some of those. Um, so today is not intended to be discussion for it because not everybody has necessarily read through it. Um, but it's at least, I think is a, is a great start. There was, there was a decent amount of time, I think even last year we looked at it. Weighing pros and cons, which we can talk about as, you know, in that um, as a discussion item in the, in the following meeting. Uh, but so it's in the packet to look through and, and uh take it from there.
And digest until December eight.
Correct, and, and I think the only thing is there, the M A S C and um in that, there's a, it, it's the actual policy. Plus the dash E, which is the really kind of like, how do you operate it? So it's, it's technically two policies, but that's how, that's, you, you, when you read it, you will understand that. And that's why I think part of what was clarified in the updated agenda today.
Yeah. Um, Michelle, I remember you asking about the um, or mentioning the South Borough decision that might be coming out of.
Yes, they mentioned that will come out um likely in Q one of twenty, twenty twenty-three.
And that was more about procedure than it was, it seemed to me that that was more, that that was again kind of a, an episode, much like the native school committee decision. As I was reading through both, both of them, so I don't know.
They anticipate it will dictate how public comment um is structured.
Is structured or is it uh, is evaluated for school? For relation to school committee agenda items? Cause that was.
Um, and it's not just school committee because the.
Well, the actual thing is right, yeah.
Right, it's, it'll be something that all town committees should be looking at on how they, how they conduct their public comment. Uh, my understanding is a little less about the, the agenda that's going to be dictated and kind of how it's run.
Yeah.
So, and, and one item, actually I'm glad you brought it up because it, it reminded me. Um, we, we also, coincidentally, we have Jim Harding coming to our meeting on December seventh.
Eight.
On December eighth. And there's, there's several topics he will talk through, but Jim Harding is um going to be working very closely with us. To um revitalize that digitization process. Um, so this would be a good time that, that we're, you know, we are talking about that on the agenda. And he has, hey, I mean, I was, he described it, you know, twenty-five plus years experience. Um, helping districts go through that. We might even want to share then. Um, like their digital policy manual. Sometimes navigating ours, I just want to get the table of contents and the page really quickly. I get that from them and then I come to ours. But Jim seems like a, you know, an excellent resource that can help us because it's, any of these policies, when you change it, it's, there's always some challenges. Um, so help us navigate. And thanks in advance for that light reading that.
Thank you for working on it, Tim. Thank you very much. Um, alrighty, so um any informational items stuck in our system?
I have a couple, Madam Chair. So um. Each year, the Operational Services Division of the state um sends out a memo that estimates the rate of inflation for social ser- social service programs. Which essentially in our world is private special education. Typically, that's two to three percent, sometimes lower than that. Uh, but we all got a memo and, and our association is, is really working hard on this. It's gonna be fourteen percent increase um in pricing and inflation for social service programs for F Y twenty-two, twenty-four.
So those are specifically seven sixty-six schools, right? Chapter seven sixty-six, okay.
Correct, so uh we actually had a meeting and, and folks were just kind of calculating what that meant. I mean, some districts is going to be over a million dollars increase. Uh, for us, it's going to be over two hundred thousand dollar increase. So we're, we're working on the budget right now. We're having all of our budget meetings. We'll have our first draft in December, but I wanted to alert you to the fact that. Uh, well, you'll see an increase in special education there because of that. Um, and, and we were told at a meeting on Tuesday that the state is not going back on it. It's going to be fourteen percent. And part of it is a catch-up provision for private schools. Uh, because they didn't get obviously all the, the money that the public schools got, which, you know, we didn't get a lot, but other places did. So it's more of a, a catch-up provision for them. Uh, but it's going to be a big impact for districts across the state.
I'd imagine that has a lot of wage impact as well and just, you know, to staff those programs.
Sure, yeah, for sure. Um, and, and some of the concerns that were expressed were, we're all trying to fill positions statewide in the public schools. And now there's going to be additional funding going into the private schools where everyone's trying to compete for the same people and that's going to be a problem. But I think the issue is it's not us against them. We're all on the same page here, on the same. No, we're all servicing kids, right? Right. That's, but it's just, it is going to be an impact. Um, so just want to kind of put that out there that that's going to be something that's going to be coming across in our budget. Um, also the, on the December eighth meeting, I'm going to ask you to do a handbook revision. Uh, there's been a revision to chapter seventy-one, section thirty-eight and three quarters, which is suspension uh provision in the law. Uh, this is coming out of the mental health law. We had a, a training uh with Andy Wa uh last week on this. Desi has not, again, has not put regulations together for this, which is a problem. Um, so it did go into effect already and there's no regulations from Desi. So we're hoping that Desi is going to be doing that by the end of um November, as we were told, but more likely before winter break. We're going to get regulations from Desi, but in the meantime, I notified all the teachers and staff about this change. Uh, once you guys do the handbook revision, reboot, let parents know about it as well so they understand what the changes are. Essentially, uh you can no longer, for the most part, suspend a kid. Uh, you need to do some other um interventions prior to suspension. So there's three, there's three areas that are exempt from that, but uh for the most, under most suspensions, you have to do. Uh, some other things that include uh meditation, some other things, interventions with kids, so.
Um, so uh does that actually, that also actually impacts some of our policies themselves too? Because it does go straight into the handbook. There's policies within our handbook, so we'll have to actually.
Yeah, Jim Hardy mentioned that the other day. Pretty problematic. It was kind of a.
So we can't put something in the handbook that hasn't been voted?
Well, sure we.
I mean, we can, but it's, but we really ought to follow that up policy-wise as soon as we can.
But we can absolutely revoke, I talked to anybody, absolutely revoke the.
Great.
And lastly, in your materials, you have the uh accept in a report for twenty one twenty two.
Okay.
And that's all, Madam Chair.
Alright. Alright, so um our next meeting is December eighth. Did we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Jess Riley, so moved, thank you, um second, Shell Kirkby second, thank you. Alright, thank you very much, folks.